All right, good evening. I would like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Foe.
Here.
Mr. Friedman. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Libbit.
Here.
Mr. Havas. Ma'am, you have a quorum to conduct business, but all votes have to be unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay. So we'll move into our public hearing. For those of you that haven't joined us, let me just briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case. They'll read a brief summary of the case. We ask the appellant to step to the podium. I believe there's a sign-in sheet there for you to sign in with your name and address, please. We also ask you to verbally state it for the record and then describe to the board what you're asking for and why. I will also say that, as Mr. Wilkins mentioned, because we only have three board members tonight, all decisions will have to be unanimous, which is under statute. If you would like to postpone your case to the next meeting where there could be four or five board members present, in your introductory comments would be the time to state that. And then after you explain to us what you're asking for, the city will read a findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with that or add any other facts at that time. There will be a staff recommendation, and then we'll open public comment. So if you're here to speak on a case, that would be your time and your opportunity to speak to the case. And then we'll turn it over to the board to deliberate, make a decision, and then move on to the next case. So will the city call the first case, please?
Zoning Board of Appeals, Case 23-11. The appellant, Oren Kalani, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard, zero permitted, with a correction, 11 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Shervilla Place between Adrian Road and Lincoln Drive at 17363 Shervilla Place, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-327-001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Article 4, Section 5.37.1, Paragraph C's 1 and D, Chapter 45 of the City Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Mr. Kalani? Do we have anybody else that we're expecting?
So I talked to the landscape architect probably around 4 o'clock, and it sounded like they were coming.
Okay.
So I would say make a motion to table it, and I'm gonna go call them.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to table this case for the time being?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Zoning Board of Appeals, Case 23-12. The appellant, Thomas Menino of Edge River Farms LLC, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance of 18 feet 7 inches of rear yard building setback, 30 feet required, 11 feet 5 inches provided, for an existing barn small event venue. The property is located on the northwest corner of 12 Mile Road and Shanticleare Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2409-376-004, at 24, I'm sorry, 23410 West 12 Mile Road, Zoned RE, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.62-A29I, Article 5, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi, if you could step to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Menino. I live at 25575 Rutledge Crossing, Farmington Hills.
Great, thank you. Can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why, please?
So, the barn is a non-conforming structure built in the 1800s, and I'm looking, I was requesting a variance for rear setback.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
For ZBA Case 23-12, the appellant, Thomas Menino of Edge River Farm LLC, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance of 18 feet 7 inches of rear yard building setback, 30 feet required, 11 feet 5 inches provided, that should say 5 inches, for an existing barn small event venue. The property is located at the northwest corner of 12 Mile Road and Shanticleare Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2409-376-004, at 23410 West 12 Mile Road, Zoned RE, Single Family Residential. The subject property is developed with a barn that was approved as a small event venue and associated parking. The properties to the north, south across 12 Mile Road, east and west are Zoned RE, Single Family Residential. The property to the north and east is developed with the Shanticleare condominiums under the monetary investment advisor's consent judgment. The property to the south across 12 Mile Road is undeveloped city-owned property, which is part of the Valley Woods Nature Preserve that spans from 10 to 12 Mile Road along the Rouge River. The property to the west is a single-family home that fronts 12 Mile Road. The site contains 1.03 acres of land with 223.03 feet of frontage on 12 Mile Road and a depth of 197.87 feet. ZBA Case 1612 was approved on January 4th, 2016, which granted variances to construct a single-family dwelling with a floor area less than the accessory building. 21 feet of rear yard setback, 35 feet required, 14 feet proposed, and for 5 feet of building height, 30 feet proposed, 25 feet permitted, for the single-family dwelling. None of the variances granted were for the barn. The house was never constructed, so the variances would have become null and void after eight months, approximately July 4th, 2017. ZBA Case 1705 was approved on April 4th, 2017, and granted a variance to permit an accessory building without the primary use of a single-family dwelling with the following conditions: The barn accessory structure shall only be used for the owner-appellant's private use consistent with and is permitted with respect to an accessory structure within the residential zoning district. No commercial, industrial, any other activity use or occupancies shall be permitted as it relates to the barn and/or property. Outside storage shall be, shall only be permitted within the residential district in which the structure is located. The barn shall be maintained in compliance with all applicable city ordinances. And the case also permitted an extension of the variances granted in ZBA Case 16-12 to April 4th, 2018. Site plan and special use approval was granted as part of PSLU 19-0008 and PSP 19-0011 on December 16th, 2019. The approved site plan indicated the conversion of the existing 2,225 square foot barn to a small event venue with parking lot, bike rack, future pedestrian connection, and right-of-way sidewalk, site maintenance, and landscaping. City Council waived the wall requirement as part of this approval due to the preference of adjacent property owners to retain the existing split rail fencing in lieu of a screen wall. As part of the special use approval, hours of operation for the small event venue were limited to 10 a.m. to midnight seven days a week. ZBA Cases 16-12 and 1705 are no longer valid or applicable as the house was never reconstructed on the property and therefore permits were never obtained. Additionally, the 2017 case was granted under the single-family residential provisions of the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has since been amended as part of Ordinance Number 1702 on May 30th, 2019, to add provisions for small event venues to the zoning ordinance, thereby permitting the use of the property for the hosting of events. The existing barn was constructed in 1850 and has been restored by the property owner over the last seven-plus years. The approved landscape plan for the property indicates 20 new 30-inch tall evergreen shrubs to screen the parking lot from 12 Mile Road, and 12 new 6- to 7-foot tall arborvitae along both the west property line and the northeast corner of the property to screen the use and sight from adjacent properties.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff's recommendation is to approve the variance requested with the following condition: That prior ZBA Cases 16-12 and 17-05 be rescinded in their entirety due to the fact that the house was never constructed within 18 months, and the barn is no longer subject to the zoning ordinance requirements as they relate to single-family residential usage due to small event venue provisions and requirements being adopted into the zoning ordinance on May 30th, 2019, as part of Ordinance Number 1702. This recommendation is based upon the following: The variance requested will not be obtrusive or injurious to surrounding properties, especially since the barn has maintained its existing setback for 173 years. The variances are being requested simply to clean up a legal non-conforming setback issue affecting the property. Conditions attached to the site plan and special use approvals will further minimize adverse effects on the surrounding properties, hours of operation, landscape screening, et cetera, and the variance requested is in keeping with and meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit has a question?
Just a quick mention for the record, number three. The house was never constructed, so the variance would have become null and void after 18 months. And I think 18, eight months was said in accident.
Oh, okay.
So it's just for the record.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
No.
Okay. We will open it up to public comment. If you are here to speak to this case, this would be your opportunity to come forward and speak now. Hi there, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi, Vanessa Stovall, 29348 East Shanticleare, and I live in the condominium community just east of the Red Barn. And just trying to understand if that would affect us somehow. One of the concerns, and we had talked about this before, I mean, we love the Red Barn and the renovation, we're happy with that. We're just trying to understand if that's going to affect our community in terms of parking, that kind of thing. Don't quite understand.
Sure. So the only request before us is to grant the setback, which is where the building sits on the property.
Mm-hmm.
So at this point, the building is sat in that location, right? So it's not moving it at all. I think as the staff said, it's cleaning up the record, because if your property doesn't have a certain feat from a property line, it's required to have a setback, or a variance of the setback, and so that's what the request is before us. So there's nothing, the parking and the times of hours were all approved at previous meetings, either, I think, by city council or the planning commission.
Because I understood that somehow the parking was an issue, maybe? No? Okay. Not a lot of parking there. So it's still going to be a small event planning?
That's what it seems to be classified under the zoning ordinance.
Okay, which is about how many, what small event?
I don't have any. Can you answer that, Sarah?
If I might, through the chair to the lady here, the barn is existing already. So the only thing that's being dealt with tonight is to rectify that legal non-conforming issue regarding the setback of the existing barn. Nothing is changing. The barn's not becoming any closer to your property line. It's staying where it is. It's basically, we're cleaning up the record.
I think her question was, can you, what is small event venue defined as?
I'd have to look up the definition. I don't have it right off the top of my head, because we're, it's, we're only dealing with the variance, so.
Sarah, do you know what page it would be in the ordinance? I could pull it up.
I can look real quick. I've got it on my phone. I don't know what page it is. It's off the top of my head.
I don't even think that there's definition per se. Let me see.
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't have that right in front of me. I don't, I mean, it was all, the use of the property was all approved as part of the site plan approval and the special use approval. So this is simply for the setback, dealing with the setback.
The setback, is that just more land?
No.
It's the distance from the property line?
From the property line to the, where the barn is currently.
Yeah, so nothing's moving, nothing's changing.
Nothing's changing.
It's an approval of a waiver that never existed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, it's literally a cleanup of the record in order for them to probably get a, an occupancy or use to open.
Occupancy, used to open, okay. See, occupancy is one of the things that concerns me, you know, so if it's occupancy, does the building, is the building being allowed to occupy?
Have small events, whatever small events are defined as under the ordinance.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Chuck Woodward, the building official, I do believe that the occupant load was set previously at 49. The building department has considered it between 21 and 49.
Okay, so that's what a small event is, 21 to 49.
Okay, and so regarding parking, it's, everything's staying the same?
Yeah, it's been approved as sufficient.
It's not going to affect our property lines?
Not changing any property lines?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi there, good evening.
Good evening. Dorian Harvey, resident of 29437 West Shanticleare. You guys brought it right to the point, the reason I came, defining small events. I'm not in opposition or in support yet, but I just recently purchased this condo, brought my mother back from Florida in the pandemic, and one of the charms that kept us or made me make this purchase was just across the fence in a little town called Bingham Farms. And the woods came adjacent to the fence. I'm an in-unit, and really enjoyed watching the deer trample from the woods into our backyard. Well, demolition on the trees started maybe three months, six months after we moved in, and now there's a 5,000-square-foot home built. Of course, I have no voice in that situation. However, my interest and concern is the small events. I understand the setback. I'm just concerned about what these events are. And I think perhaps maybe the best person to answer that would be the property owner himself.
If I might, through the chair to gentlemen, so I can give you my contact information. This all went to city council. There are several conditions that were placed on the property for the small events and what can and cannot happen on the property, the hours of operation.
Yes.
Under the single-family zoning section of the ordinance, so there's no definition of small event venues, but it's basically minimum, maximum building size of 3,000 square feet on the first floor, one acre minimum of land required, maximum building height 30 feet, must be located on a major thoroughfare, all parking must be provided in accordance with the zoning ordinance requirements, which is based on the number of occupants and how they're utilizing the interior of the building. So they do meet those ordinance requirements. All activities shall be held inside the building. Building setbacks shall be a minimum of 30 feet, which is what the variance is for tonight. That's the only thing that cannot meet ordinance requirements.
Sure.
And 6-foot wall is required, but again, council waived the wall. Let's see here, driveway approach must be of an acceptable material, onsite barrier-free parking spaces must be provided, and subject to all other ordinance requirements pertaining to pedestrian circulation, ADA, landscape, stormwater management, et cetera.
Understood. So I just want to make note to you all. My concern would be what these events are going to be. You know, there's a church, I was awakened just maybe the next summer from a concert on Loser at a church, and it was like they were outside of our front door. So that would just be my concern, and I'd love to come visit. I know you've invited folks to come over. Yes, I'd like to come. I'm just interested in knowing what the small events are. So if you would make note of that, that would be very helpful.
Yep, thank you. You've been recorded on the record. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this case? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I have no issue with correcting the record. I would approve the variance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I don't have an issue with the variance for the rear yard building.
Okay, thank you. I also agree that this is simply cleaning up the record so that the setback is waived officially in the property records. So can I have you make a motion, Mr. Rogers?
Sure. In regards to Case, ZBA Case Number 23-12, the appellant, Thomas Menino of Edge River Farm LLC, owner, is requesting the following from the board: A variance of 18 feet 7 inches of rear yard building setback, 30 feet required, 11 feet 5 inches provided, for an existing barn small event venue. The property is located at the northwest corner of 12 Mile Road and Shanticleare Drive, Sidwell Parcel, 2409-376-004, at 23410 West 12 Mile Road, Zoned RE, Single Family Residential. I make a motion to approve this variance, this requested variance with the following condition: That prior ZBA Cases Number 16-12 and Number 17-05 be rescinded in their entirety due to the fact that the house was never constructed within 18 months, and the barn is no longer subject to the zoning ordinance requirements as they relate to single-family residential usage due to small event venue provisions and requirements being adopted into the zoning ordinance on May 30th, 2019, as part of Ordinance Number 1702. I make this motion based upon the following: Number one, the variances requested will not be obtrusive or injurious to surrounding properties, especially since the barn has maintained its existing setback for 173 years. The variances are being requested simply to clean up the legal non-conforming setback issue affecting the property. Number two, conditions attached to the site plan and special land use approvals will further minimize adverse effects on the surrounding properties, i.e. hours of operation, landscape, screening, et cetera. And lastly, the variance requested is in keeping with and meets the spirit and the intent of the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that request is granted, and will the city call the next case, please? Oh, actually, yeah, I don't have to take it off the...
Requalification?
Yes, please. We probably need to take it off, can I have a motion to take it off the, put it back on the table?
Make a motion to put it back on the table.
Thank you for the motion to put 2311 back on the table. All those in favor? Aye? Okay. Can you call the case again, please?
Zoning Board of Appeals, Case 23-11. The appellant, Oren Kalani, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard, zero permitted, and a correction of 11 feet proposed. The property is located on the south side of Shervilla Place between Adrian Road and Lincoln Drive at 17363 Shervilla Place, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-327-001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to the Article 4, Section 5.37.1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant here? Hi there, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Oren Kalani. My address is 5087 Hickory Point Drive, as in Orchard Lake.
Perfect, thank you. And can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
Okay, so we recently bought a property, family home, it's our first family home. I have a wife and two kids. We've been living at my father-in-law's for three years now, because it took a while to find a property in the area that we wanted. One of the, one of the big selling points for this property for us is it had a really nice backyard. There's an existing chain-link fence there, which needs some maintenance. It's a low fence. It's not very sightly, but we, our plan was to erect a new fence where the old fence was. When we started looking into that, we found out that actually that fence line is slightly over our property line. So really, there seems to be three options, and that's why I'm here today. Obviously, what we would love to happen is for us to put a new fence exactly where the old fence was. Although that's what our wish would be, we also understand that's not, might not be as fair, you know, to everyone else because it's outside slightly of our property line, even though we believe that this fence has been up even since before the ordinance was put into effect. So the other option is, it would be a compromise where, where we would have like a double gate, and we would cut off the corner and come into our property line, but then still put up a new fence. And then the third option, which we have in front of us, because if, on the corner of our property, where, where the ordinance dictates where we should be putting our fence, there's an outside seating area, roof's outside seating area, it would take a lot of the yard away, but then it'd also make the outside seating area look, we would just be staring directly at a fence, which wouldn't be so nice. Now, I also went, before I looked into all of this, I did go to all of my surrounding, a lot of my surrounding neighbors and asked them what they would like. And I have a signed piece of paper that they're all more than happy for me, yeah, to put up a new fence, actually where the old fence is. I think it would make, it would definitely make the neighborhood look better, and people would be happy to see it. But I think they're kind of our, they're our option, so I'm here today to see which kind of option you guys decide to give me.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Findings of fact, Case 23-11. The appellant, Oren Kalani, owner, is requesting the following waiver from the board: A waiver to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard, zero feet permitted, 11 feet proposed, which is a correction to the legal notice. The property is located on the south side of Shervilla Place between Adrian Road and Lincoln Drive at 17363 Shervilla Place, Sidwell Parcel, 2424-327-001, Zoned R2, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Article 4, Section 5.37.1, Paragraph C, Subsections 1 and D, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are Zoned R2, Single Family Residential, and are developed with legal non-conforming single-family dwellings in the Sherwood Village sub. Field inspection of the surrounding area reveals the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one-story, single-family dwellings, and a few two-story dwellings mixed in. The exteriors are made of mostly brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have attached garages. The subject property was built in 1961 and is a 2,470-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a 529-square-foot attached garage. The appellant proposes to erect a 6-foot vinyl privacy fence beyond the setback for a double frontage lot, zero permitted, and again, 11 feet proposed.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Except that it's not, it's not set in stone that we want a 6-foot privacy fence. We're also thinking of like, you know, a wooden fence that has some sort of see-through ability. Yes, so, but apart from that, yeah.
Okay, all right. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the waiver for a 6-foot high vinyl privacy fence 11 feet beyond the side of the house with the following conditions: The appellant applied for the required fence permit and complied with all other fence requirements. This recommendation is based upon the following: The new fence will replace a legal non-conforming chain-link fence, and the strict application of the regulation will result in practical difficulties to the owner of this property. The proposed fence, with the proposed conditions, is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you'd like to add at this time?
I think that's all.
Seeing no one in the auditorium, I'm gonna open and close public comment. And then I would like to ask our acting secretary to read this letter into the record, please.
This letter dated January 23rd, 2023. Rifka and Oren Kalani, 1924.
Rifka and Orin Kalani, one-seven-three-six-three Shervilla Place, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-seven-five, replacement of the existing backyard fence. We propose removing the existing chain-link fencing running parallel to Lathrop Boulevard. Our intention is the installation of a privacy fence, not exceeding seventy-two inches in height at the same location. The existing fence location is not allowed under the current ordinance for front yard setbacks. The city of Southfield considers this corner lot a double-frontage yard. Setbacks for this front yard are also called the common street line. This line is an additional fifteen to sixteen feet back from the current fence line location running parallel to Lathrop Boulevard. Our appeal to the zoning board is allowing us to keep the current fence location as we replace the fence. The current ordinance is restrictive to our use of the property given the unusual lot shape. We intend to landscape the frontage along Lathrop with trees and shrubs, softening the appearance of the proposed new privacy fencing. Please indicate your support for our appeal by your signature and address below. Shoshana Cott, one-seven-three-three-zero Adrian. Ellie Abraham, one-seven-seven-three-four Shervilla Place. Uh, this one's a hard one. Leela Chanis, one-seven-three-three-three Shervilla. Dr. Cynthia Miller, two-five-seven-nine-nine Lathrop Street. Royce Phillips, one-seven-three-seven-six Shervilla Place. And that is it.
Okay, perfect, thank you, um, so, okay, so that's on the record, okay, so we're turning it over to the board. Ms. Libbit?
I have no problem with it.
Okay, sounds good, uh, Mr. Rogers?
Um, my other question for you is, what option are you, does are you in the most, as far, are you looking to do the, uh, the wood fencing or the vinyl fencing?
So I think, we're still gonna have to look into that, either way, we're going to put something that looks nice, um, I think we're leaning to more of a wood fencing because the, maybe the vinyl might be a little bit too, um, too private, um, but either way, something that goes with the house and the surroundings.
Okay, and then one other question, I, you said that, I see on the site plan that the chain-link fence that's there now is not on your property, so the new fence is going to be brought in, it looks like, according to the plan?
So, yes.
Where it's gonna be, basically, there's gonna be no, there's gonna be no, you know, dispute, it'll be on your, uh, property?
Right, yeah, so, um, yeah, the, 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 the initial request was to put a new fence exactly where the old fence was, our compromise would be, um, where that red line is showing on the screen, which would be to come into our property line, and then, and then just have a double gate, and then cut back onto that, onto, onto the fence line.
Okay, because I think it's a good idea, if you can redo the fence, to have the whole fence be on your property.
Okay.
So that's, that's why.
Madam Chair of the, uh.
Yeah, I don't think we can grant.
It's required.
Yeah, we can't grant, they won't.
He can't, he can't put the fence in the easement.
Mm-hmm.
He can't put the fence in the easement.
No, he has to put it on his property, and that's why we were gonna require a survey that shows exactly, and they'll have to stake where the property line is, so they make sure when the fence company comes out there, we'll send an inspector out to make sure the stakes are in, the fence are in the right location.
Okay, yeah, as long as it's not on somebody else's property, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
Well, the easement is somebody else's property.
That's true.
I know what you mean by that.
That's true, that's true, yep, that's true, that's true.
Other than that.
Yeah, and I don't think we have to determine, um, um, material.
No, no.
Right, we can just say a privacy fence.
That's correct.
Okay, everybody agreed that we just offer a privacy fence and then material can be determined with the, um, uh, permit? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I also agree, I, 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 I agree the chain-link fence is outdated and, um, looks like you're doing renovations on the house, so makes perfect sense to do the fence at this time, um, so, Ms. Libbit, would you make a motion for us?
Sure.
Did you get all those corrections in there, too?
I did.
Okay.
You know I heard them. This is case twenty-three-dash-eleven, the appellant is Orin Kalani, owner. He's requesting a waiver to erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero permitted, eleven proposed. The property is located on the south side of Shervilla Place between Adrian Road and Lincoln Drive at seventeen-three-six-three Shervilla Place, Sidwell Parcel number twenty-four dash twenty-four dash three-twenty-seven dash zero-zero-one, zone residential, Saint, single-family residential. The appellant is requesting to erect a six, six-foot vinyl privacy fence beyond the setback for a double-frontage lot, zero permitted, eleven proposed. I move approval of the waiver for a six-foot high vinyl privacy fence, eleven feet beyond the side of the house with the following conditions: The appellant applied for the required fence permit and comply with all other fence requirements with the following recommendations: The new fence will replace a legal nonconforming chain-link fence, and the strict application of the regulations would result in practical difficulties for the owner of this property. The pro, the proposed fence with the proposed conditions is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Great, um, if I could just make one correction, um, in the recommend, or in the motion, you did say vinyl privacy fence.
Oh, you know, I thought about that as I said it.
Okay, so let's.
With a six-foot fence.
Perfect, okay, perfect, okay, um, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so just continue to have your, you or your fence company work with the city on the permitting.
Okay, and they'll know what to do, and will I get any information about, about all of this stuff?
What happens from here?
You're gonna, you're gonna fill out a fence application, um, your, uh, landscape architect, John Mayer.
Yep.
Can help you with that.
Fence application, got it.
Yeah, you're gonna have to fill out, and we're gonna have to have a survey and the, and the description of the fence from whoever you're gonna get the fence from, they'll just give you, like you provide, like John provided the pictures.
And is that different from the survey that we've already have done? Is, is there something different?
Well, you're gonna have to have it staked.
Staked, okay, fine.
Right, so you're gonna call a survey, I'll just stake the property line, so we can, so when the inspector comes out, he'll know that that fence is within the, within the property line.
Got it.
And it's not in the easement.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, um, okay, so that closes our public hearing and moves us to approval of the minutes, uh, so we have minutes from December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Did anybody see any changes or corrections? I'd say, I think the minutes are fantastic, so the team that's doing them have gotten excellent at this, so, I don't know if it's the video, or the microphones are better, or what it is, but kudos to them because we used to have significant changes.
Oh, is that right?
And it, it has gotten just perf, perfect, perfect, after perfect, after perfect, so, sorry to interrupt. Can I, I have a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from December twentieth?
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And then we also have minutes from February seventh, um, anything?
Saying they're good.
Okay.
Is that date correct?
February seventh? Do you, do you think we weren't here on February seventh?
No, I have some.
I have, that I had a zoning board.
Through the chair to Ms. Libbit, yes, that is a correct date, we did have another meeting on February twenty-first, so those minutes are coming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All right, and a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so both minutes are, uh, approved, and then, looks like our next meeting is May second, um, and we have two cases, is, is, are we closed for the time at this point?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
The deadline has passed for May second.
Okay.
But I realized that I didn't put a request to cancel the April eighteenth meeting, so, could the board make a motion?
And I have a motion to request, or a motion to cancel the April eighteenth meeting.
Motion to cancel.
The April eighteenth meeting. April eighteenth, which would be like two weeks, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, April eighteenth is canceled, um, would you mind, bring, sending a email to everyone?
Yes, I will.
Okay, that would be great, thank you. Okay, and then, okay, so then a meeting, May second, two cases, looks like a menu board case and a commercial case? Okay, um, all right, any, any, anything about those? Nothing? Okay, great, any miscellaneous?
Pretty straightforward.
All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment, my turn.
I'm sitting for you.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned.